City Operations Committee. Let the record show that all members are present with the exception of Alderman Crawford. I'll make a motion to the approval of the minutes from October 21st, 25th, I have a second. Second by Alderman Benyon, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unfinished business, we have tree maintenance and the removal and the right-of-way. We weren't ready for this, right? Wasn't this supposed to be out a little bit longer?
This was one that I had it written down for voting, that's up to you then.
Was this, well, I know that Tiffany, that I wasn't sure if there's no way to ask James. Wasn't this supposed to be out a little bit longer, the right-of-way stuff?
Yeah, the last time it was mentioned here was probably going to be more part of the budgeting development and potential shifts in the street crews to get dedicated people focused on pruning brush and whatnot so that traffic control devices were always visible and whatnot.
Okay. Does they do some now, James?
Yep, they certainly could. And I think they have done some, but if, you know, if there is specific locations that, you know, someone knows need to be attended to, we can certainly do that at this point.
Okay, so from now till then, if there's just spots and Alderman can issue them and through your office and they can just get addressed?
Yep.
Okay.
And there's like, the new stop signs they're putting up on, where does that start and go?
The two where they're missing, I know you said you had pushed some bad or dark stop signs?
Yep, exactly.
Okay. Does anybody else have anything on this?
I can just make one comment if I may.
Yep.
I put out a memo to have all departments please fire codes DBW when they see that there's an obstruction to call it in so that we can get it taken care of.
Good, thank you. And then this topic is different than the one just sort of aware with the medians, this was the other topic.
Yep.
That's on for a later agenda.
There was like stop signs all over the city that brush is, we don't know nothing yet, yeah.
Okay, very good, thanks. Under new referrals was the side-by-side. James, are you covering that?
You have the quotes, Tiffany reminded you the quotes. And certainly the DPW would advocate for making this purchase. It's been a missed piece of equipment since the old one went away.
Did everybody receive the emails with the three quotes?
Yes.
Jen, did you get it?
Um, I think so.
And in a nutshell, there's three quotes, James helped fill in, but John Deere, Bobcat, and Kubota. And when everything was pared down, oh, yes, uh, and when everything was pared down apples to apples with the plow that was installed on it as well as the salt spreader, the Bobcat, just for quick oversight, has six cubic foot spreader on the back for salting bridges and the parks and stuff like that, rather than currently they do it by, you'll see them out there with the pile in the back of the one ton, they do it by hand, kind of inefficiently, this would help speed that up. The Bobcat needs two different plows, they don't have a combo, and that came in 42,006-2916. The John Deere, two different versions, one plow, but one's gas, one is diesel. And they were 38,104 on the gas and 39,437 on the diesel. And then the Kubota is a 10 cubic foot spreader, one plow, diesel, for a bid price of 37,38215. The recommendation would be to move forward with purchasing the Kubota from a local dealership, which then allows for, they're all actually local dealerships, I should've said. One plow sizable spreader allows them to do that. It also gives them back the vehicle that they need for the stadium setup and various, it's an all-season vehicle, not just plowing.
And it's also used for mosquito spraying too, in the areas that they can't get the pickup trucks in.
Okay. So it is used all, all year long and it's been down for, been on for a year and a half maybe?
Yeah, before my time, at least, at least a year.
We didn't have it for all summer, so it was, yeah.
Okay, I remember we talked about this before. Any thoughts or questions? Sunny?
So, and I appreciate that the mayor had put it forward that, you know, he gave us time and said when we did, that we needed some other things before, so we kind of put this to the side, knowing that we needed to do it. And I think that we have learned since then more of the different applications that it has. So I would support it, I think that looking to see financially where, and to see if you guys have a suggestion for where there's money in any line items to do it, to purchase it.
Well, I know when we originally talked to some of that interest from that one account, it was mentioned during that, I made mention of some of that being used for this purchase.
Some of that maybe?
The interest from the, let's help me please?
From the New York class.
Thank you, from the New York class?
Yep.
I, sorry.
No, I'm sorry, if I may, let us, let us work on funding, and we'll come back to you. When do we have our next voting, it would be?
Three weeks.
Eighteen.
Three years, so we'll have, we'll put funding together and give it all to you. And if you agree with that, then we'll put the P L that for it, okay?
Yeah, because I know that there's a lead time on the plow of, I think it's shredder, I'm sorry, spreader, I think it had a lead time. Is that what, sorry, one of them had a lead time of about six weeks, so it's kind of important to kind of?
Oh yeah, a lead, oh yeah, a lead time of thirty to sixty days on the spreader.
On the spreader. And the plow is in mount, right?
The plow was seven to fourteen, seven to fourteen days.
There you go.
Machine is in stock.
Well, we're getting snow, what, later this week or?
Next week.
Next week. Realistically not plowable or even saltable with the road temperatures and sidewalk temperatures, but by mid-December it would probably be appreciated via the fleet of vehicles. So if that could timeline out, that'd be great. I would recommend the Kubota, does anybody have any?
Agreed.
Okay.
I agree with that one.
Do we, we don't need really good formal, like today, right Tiffany?
Nope.
Okay, thanks. All right, nothing else on that? Uh, there are no committee reports, I'll make a motion for adjournment, okay, second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Benyon, in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I'll call the other, call the order of the Finance Committee meeting for Tuesday, November 4. Let the record show that all aldermen are here with the exception of Alderman Crawford. Approval of the minutes from the previous committee meeting, which was Tuesday, October 21st, I'll make a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Forney, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, under unfinished business, we have capital funds. And for the public, we have been going through each one of the capital funds, taking a look at where monies are available, capital funds that we might need to close. And so we've been doing five at a time, Alderman Benyon.
I was just gonna ask really quick, where were we at with that idea of putting some information at the top with a brief description of what it's for?
I thought we did it at the last one.
Did, did we ever formalize anything on that? I know I had sent you something, Sunny.
Yeah, I had it in the last one, but this one, I'm not sure what happened.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, that's my fault.
Okay.
Yeah, just, and we have the date that it started, what the actual, not just kind of the P L, but what the actual, what it was for.
All right, I'll put second one through and forward.
Okay, thank you.
First one in front of you, we have capital project 215, the comprehensive development plan. This project is done and all the funds is received and all the project, all the costs have been expended. There is no money left in that account right now, it's a zero balance. And I spoke with Carrie yesterday, she said that one is done, there's nothing left to do. For this one, we could close it if we want, so.
I recommend we, we close it, do some house cleaning, house cleaning there, so. Okay, so we'll put that down, get it closed, any, okay?
Next one, I think we could talk about this one, the 216th, the Splash Park. Um, we do have a balance in there, we got eight, seventy-three thousand, seven hundred, twelve thousand, forty-eight cents. And that project is ongoing, and I'm not sure when it's gonna be completed.
So we should put that on, maybe parks for an update on it in our next meeting? To see where we're at with that?
With the Splash Park?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Can we have someone come in?
Actually, that would be very helpful. Do, Mayor, do you think we could get somebody to come in to kind of talk to the council about it, since it's been kind of on this delayed path?
Yeah, James is well prepared, he could be well prepared to talk about all of that. Are you talking to bring in CPL, the?
Yeah.
Yeah, we could try to arrange that also.
Okay. Yeah, Alderman?
No, I was just gonna ask, did you already have that on?
I thought we had put it on under schedule projects.
We had put the pool on there, but then, um, they were waiting on grant funding, but we didn't.
Could be, I thought that that was already on that one, that's why I was just gonna ask why change committees, if it was already on that one?
Oh, which one?
I thought the Splash Park updates had already been carried out the Finance Committee previously.
Oh.
You know what, it was under Finance.
That was always asked around, kicking into a different committee, just.
So we can, we can leave it on Finance, I don't know if it makes more sense to be on Parks, so. Um, I think we have, I think you can go under either, as long as, Tiffany, if it's under Finance already, just leave it on there. And Mayor, what, how much more time do we need before we can kind of, that they could come, could we be?
Well, there's no meeting next week, so I guess the following week, is that up?
The other committee meeting?
The following week?
That's the 18th, we can't regular, as we mentioned.
Jim, about the 18th, can we, I think we can put together an update on the park. We can be able to.
The 18th was then committees.
Yep.
Okay, just for your.
Yeah, and if CPL could be there to give us kind of an update, that would be great.
If anybody's gone by, they are back to work over there, and they've been, they've been moving along a lot, so. We'll give you a complete update on it.
Okay, thank you.
All right, the next one is capital project 217, the BBG grant marketing. That project is still come, all done and finished, um, as of, actually, I haven't related. It's actually has also, who would care about it, technically closed as well.
Yes, and this was the one that came out of the ALCA funds to be able to assist. It was one of the two grants that were available through downtown businesses. This one was the marketing component, so we all agreed to, let's put it on for closure.
And next one is capital project 218, this is also related to the ALCA fund to assist, the BBG real estate assistance program for all businesses downtown. That one is still done, also going to be closed at some point.
Mayor, put that on, so when we get these all together, if, Tiffany, we can just put those on to close them all at once, that would be great.
And next one is capital project 219, the Oak Hill Park. This one, this project is also done, um, we received all the funding. And we got a grant on that budget and that's been a state off through grant program from Goodmon, we received from the state. Um, we do have a balance of 200,0049992 cents left in the capital project.
And out of there, that's taking out what we?
Yeah, I think we, we was bringing 4,000, if you look under there.
Yep.
Just.
Okay, yep.
And that was transferred to capital project 256.
So we've talked about some of the things that are needed still at Oak Hill. On this one, I think we should add this one back to parks, along with looking to develop, identify the issues. We have trees that need to come down, we have trees that were replacing the trees that died that were put in initially that are not thriving, we'll say. And general kind of, and then fixing that left side of the park as we look at it. So I think that we'll take a large portion, and we had said we want to make sure that the money is kind of saved for the parks to be able to utilize. So I think if we can put that on the parks committee for next time, and then we can kind of look at it and begin to get a, a list together of what's kind of needed and a report out. Is that what you agree?
The trees are on this, right today, so.
Yeah, because there are several up there that are probably not viable and have become safety hazards, so. Okay, anything else on Oak Hill in the dog park?
That's all I have.
All right, so we'll put, when we get three on for close, right?
Yep, 217, 218, and 215.
Do you think next time, maybe you could sprinkle some of these fast ones in with the five long ones that you sometimes put together?
Okay, new referrals for consideration, we have none, committee reports, we have none. I'll make a motion to adjourn, or a second, second by Alderman Benyon, all in favor? Opposed?
All right, I call the Public Safety Committee for November 4th. Approval of the previous minutes from Tuesday, October 21st, I'll make a motion, can I get a second?
Second.
Second by Anastasia, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, first on the agenda was the North Union Street lighting, LED streetlights and sidewalk lighting. Assuming this will be James, the mayor?
Yeah. You want me to talk about Dave's email he sent today?
I can, I can do that.
All right.
So, uh, since we talked about this last, I put together a brief plan of how I recommend we proceed to work our way through all of the lighting on North Union Street. Um, we're still filling in some details on that, but we did get first piece of cost data today, which is to replace all the actual streetlights, streetlight heads, not the poles. And the preliminary cost estimate on that is eighty to eighty-five thousand dollars. So we will refine that and then, um, as well as the remainder of the work, pedestrian lighting is a phase and then the string lights are a phase. So we're making progress on that, putting it together in a package that when we have a few more details together, we'll be able to present to the council, so you can see the whole, the whole concept and the whole cost.
So I'm sorry, I caught, you said that pedestrian lighting was a phase, and what was it, the third one?
The string lights, the decorative lighting.
The decorative, okay, thank you.
Which, I guess we're all assuming those string lights in some variety, but part of what I propose is seeking some professional design help about decorative lighting, and that's certainly not within my knowledge.
All right, any other questions or comments on that one? All right, so about how long we want to wait before we revisit this topic?
Let's see, next week's, uh?
Is it a month ago?
Yeah, I gotta say, I think a month is better than trying to push it into two weeks.
So yeah, first one, we can do first two weeks in December, please?
Very, yes. Wasn't there, isn't there money still left on that North Union Street one lines that could be used towards this, what was that amount?
Eighty-six thousand, two nine, two hundred and nine dollars.
Okay, which capital fund is that?
Two zero one.
Two zero one. All right. So we will revisit this at the first committee meeting in December, any other questions on this one? All right, new referrals, we have the left turn signal at West State Street that intersects with Independence Drive. Uh, I was gonna postpone this, but the, the light, I saw it was working, I sent the picture to the council via text, I think it was a couple of days ago, when I was down there enjoying a nice tea from Starbucks. I don't know what else John wanted to talk about on this particular topic, so I just wanted to let that part be known, but I'm gonna go ahead and postpone that until the next meeting. So I'll make a motion to postpone to the next committee meeting, can I get a second? Second by Benyon, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, the second part was the crosswalk signage at North Seventh Street. Again, he is not here to discuss this portion, so I'm gonna postpone that to the next Public Safety meeting. So I'll make a motion, postpone, can I get a second? Second by McCall, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, and no committee reports?
Yes, I just, go back real quick, if that, if that thing starts to take a little bit too long of that plan on the lights, can we look at least doing the street lighting, and you got the cost app at the eighty-six thousand, and break it down apart so that way we can address the long needed lighting upgrade? And I'm not saying it's gonna take a while, I'm just saying, if it looks like it's gonna take long, can we at least just address that portion and address the public safety concern?
Actually, that's why I set it up in cases, because we could definitely, I mean, the streetlight poles is there, all we do is change that head.
And that's why, is that funny, if I ask about that funny, just if it is, then we can at least address that. Thanks.
Not a problem.
Not to me anyway. All right, nothing else for Public Safety, I'll make a motion to adjourn, can I get a second?
Second.
Second by Carrie, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Do you adjourn for Public Safety?
Uh, call to order the Strategic Planning Committee, um, let's see, please note, all aldermen are present except for Alderman Crawford. Approval of the minutes from the previous committee on Tuesday, August 21st, I'll make a motion. Can I second?
Second.
Second, thank you, all is in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Um, unfinished business, the Comprehensive Needs Report for the municipal building. I think that's you again.
Um, so I've been digging into this, apparently there has been some work done in the past with some consultants for a comprehensive needs report for this building. The last thing I learned today is that that report was, either isn't done or was never finished by whoever that consultant was, which apparently came to us through our insurance company. Um, so I need to check now with the insurance company, maybe they actually have a copy of it. Um, our HVAC technician does not have a copy of it. And/or it just wasn't done. I do have, you know, not in a format that I was able to put together by last week, suitable for the council, everything that our building staff knows about this building and thinks is within, you know, would be defined as a need to be addressed within the building. And I certainly have a few more things in my six months of being here that I would add to that. So I think within a couple of weeks, I'll, I'll be able to give you at least a reasonable update memo on where we stand on all of those sources of information. And then we can start the hard work of prioritizing and thinking about how we get things up.
It's those new really good ones that we're using.
So, do you want to put it back on the committee, was it November 18th, or do you want to wait until December?
We should wait till September. We put some stuff already on for the 18th.
Yeah.
Okay.
And Vern and that one, it went on the first for December.
Yeah, December is everything that's already been shuffled, and some things I have from the EV charger grant that are due to you before then, I would appreciate December.
Um, Tiffany? Thank you. Um, thank you, James. No new referrals for consideration, no committee reports, so motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, I want to get to go again. Um, all right, a call to order the Youth and Recreation Committee for, please note, all aldermen are present except for Alderman Crawford. Um, approval of the minutes of the previous committee, oh, we slacked, Tuesday, May 6th, 2024, 2025? Okay, 2025. I'll make a motion, can I get a second? Thank you, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Okay. Um, no unfinished business, and then new referrals for consideration, we have the trees in Oak Hill Park. So I, Sunny, I want to talk about that.
Well, I, I think one of the things is that we need to, it's been said a few times, we need to reach out to, um, since we don't have a forester, and I, I know James, you said there was somebody on your team that had some experience?
Yes, there is.
So if, if they're able and they have that experience to go and, and look, I know I put through a few, using I, our I work system, right? I put through a few, and I put pictures up and stuff, because we have a number of, we have some that are, you just need to look at, and they're dead, and we have others that are definitely dropping major branches, and either need to be trimmed, or we need to look at what we need to do to, to take them down, and then, because it is Oak Hill Park, what we need to do to reinvest trees within that that will have some, some longevity. So I'm just looking for us to, to get a plan together, I realize winter is here, so we're probably looking into the spring and stuff, we do have some money available within that capital fund, so I guess if somebody could at least go out and do a, like a tree assessment, and then give us some feedback as to what the recommendations are.
Yes, I would, I can have that for you, um, I think it probably exists already, honestly. And at the next Finance Committee, we will have a tree removal contract on your agenda, so then we'll have a contractor, and honestly, if we do get into winter, and we don't have too much snow, it's actually not a bad time to cut trees, so we can mobilize that.
Okay, excellent. So. Let's, maybe the committee meeting after we approve the, or look at the contract? The potential contract, so?
Yeah.
I mean, I think at this point in time, if we, I know we, we continue to build your, your list each week, so I'm okay to put this out a month, you know, at least?
Yeah, no, no.
Okay, I mean, we could go, I mean, honestly, put it out six weeks, because we put four weeks on stuff, right? So I'm okay to put it out six weeks.
But we do need to be careful, don't, Tiffany, some of the conversations that we have, we'll have to reintroduce at the beginning of the year if it doesn't?
Uh, yeah, those OPLs, they die annually.
Right.
And then they're all reintroduced, but, um, right now, the beginning of meeting of December, I don't have anything on the agenda except what's been referred tonight, so there's nothing that was referred from a prior meeting to that meeting.
Okay. Okay.
So it's actually, so that, that would work, would that work for you?
Okay, let's put it out for then.
I wanna just add a little bit, that, um, my hope is that once we find a contractor, we can possibly get a PL done, uh, before Christmas. That way, that part is decided, hopefully we'll have our tree list. And then maybe over the winter months, we can get those trees done. And then that way, the focus could be on, I could say, phase two, which is some of the other issues that, uh, we've had, uh, for addressing Oak Hill Park and Franchot Park. So, Jen, it's just my thought process on that.
Are some of them trees in those respective parks ash trees that would fall under that funding that we already put there to save a little bit of that?
Um, there may be a couple in Franchot that are ash. Um, I don't think there's any ash in Oak Hill based on whatever.
Okay, just as Kerry said, we could pull them funds from there or not?
Yeah.
Pull everything out of the Oak Hill Fund if possible.
Anything else? Are you good? Okay, um, moving on to next referral for consideration was, um, we talked about it, two weeks ago, the Capital Fund two oh three, there's a Franchot Park communication project. I emailed everybody out last week, the proposal that we did in September of twenty twenty-four. Um, that was presented to the council, um, and given to the previous DPW director. So, um, and so I know we've talked about this a few times over the year and in May and spring and just highlighting some of those little things that we wanted to get taken care of, um, so some of that didn't hap, or that didn't happen. Um, so just kind of because we have James this year, um, and I know Joe didn't really hear anything about it before, so just bringing this back to the table, um, because those funds are still there in that account. Um, and again, I know we're getting into winter, but, um, what does that look like, you know, moving forward and having something in place so the park is, um, just kind of refreshed for the spring? So yeah, these were all the proposals that Sonia and I worked on. Um, we met with the re, with some residents down there, um, we met with the mayor down there a couple of times and just kind of walking through, looking at big picture, but then looking at some little things, um, that would be beneficial for the people that use that park, I mean, it's a huge park. And, um, I think because of just some of the, you know, whether it's the core or the trail or the dead trees hanging over, um, lack of lighting, you know, I don't think it's utilized in a way that it could be, so. I know our drinking fountain was installed, so plus, we've checked off a major, uh, pain point for some people, so that's good.
That was done, right?
As far as I know. Well, I'm on record, it was done, I guess, is, was it done in salt?
Yeah, the, the drinking fountain is then installed.
Yeah.
And the dead trees are on the tree list, so a couple of weeks here, we get our tree contractor.
Sonia.
Be addressing them.
So while, you know, I think sometimes people say, well, there's all these other things, why focus on the parks? But the parks are, are important to our residents, they're important to our children. There are reasons why people move to, um, communities, right? We have this, I remember taking my children there, we have this beautiful park down there. I think that particularly when we talk about making it nicer and adding additional lighting, we make it safer. We make it safer for the residents that are there, we make it safer for children and individuals visiting it. And I, I think Jen and I share this, um, frustration that, that we've had this plan and we, we've, we're kind of stalled and if we could get a, a plan in place so that we knew most of these things, I think, are, they might seem cosmetic, but they make a, a huge difference. One of the things we had proposed is there is a horseshoe pit. By the way, no one has played horseshoes down there in as long as we can remember for the most part. It would be perfect, you know, when we talked about it, just to pull out those stakes, make it into a small dark dog park, um, a couple of benches. So, you know, we're not asking to spend hundreds of thousands of dollars to, um, do this, we're just looking to make it safer, more usable, the signage that we've talked about, I mean, and that signage needs to be consistent with all the parks. You know, um, we've had different ideas and, and we just need to get the signage done for all the parks. I'm also, as everybody knows, fond of a, of a QR code, so if we want to, like, we could even put a QR code that would link to the other parks or something, so, you know, if people were unfamiliar. So I, I think there's some fun and interesting things that we could do with that also. The, uh, blacktop patching and the weeds coming up is, is also a safety issue because we have kids who are riding their bikes, they're using their skateboards, we have people in wheelchairs who visit that, walkers, so I, I think that there's lots of reasons to make sure that this moves forward. And that prior to, um, summer and, you know, the opening, I mean, I'd like to see come May, this comprehensive plan be in place and these updates being done. And I know that part of that requires a design of a, um, of signage to go on the, um, South Union Street, which will be great because we've just finished that and it would be nice if that signage was consistent with the other signage up and down Union Street, just for cohesiveness.
And I think this is in line with, I mean, moving forward with this, I had, I'm not sure, but just kind of drafting together a five-year, like, improvement plan for all the parks in the city. That would include, you know, our little park, parklets, is that what we call them, parklets? Um, and, um, obviously we have, um, the Marcus Park is being, um, updated and, and just kind of renewed. And then I know some of the other parks have had updates. And obviously this splash park will be at War Vets, but really looking at some of those other little parks and, and how can we then kind of put that refreshed through the whole community?
I was reading, uh, already this list, uh, to me, it seems like it would be more sense to just refer this to James, uh, because number one, three, five, and six, all have cost impacts to them and there are, uh, things that we would have to order. The blacktop, for example, is not even open, it's probably closed now, it's November. So just get a cost estimate and come back and change it very, very fast at the perfect time, we need to be watching the budget. As far as the leading goes, our, our student crews could start doing that now. But, uh, I, I would think most of this is, it just needs to get, uh, cost, price tags attached to it and let us know what it's gonna cost and, and add it into the, the budget procedure.
Yeah, I think that was the initial plan in twenty twenty-four when it was proposed for the last, um, DPD Director to, you know, and whoever, um, to get, you know, the costs and how could we plan for that for that upcoming spring of twenty twenty-five? Um, obviously that didn't happen. I know when James initially came, we had started to talk about that again and sent, kind of re-brought, uh, resent it to him and the mayor, but again, he's, you know, his plate overfilled quickly. And so, you know, we'll try, you know, hopefully as, again, like you said, if we can get some costs and work on some of the things that can be done, like taking the trees, doing the weeds, um, maybe replace the basketball nets, that can happen without, you know, rain or shine. Um, and then, you know, while we're looking at lighting, like, the, the lights down there, or none of them turn on. There's no bulbs in any of them, so I don't know, I don't, I don't know anything about the lights, they're the same lights as the streetlights, if that's something that could be, when you're talking about, um, that lighting package, maybe taking, checking that out and putting those in the package as well. Um, so those little things can be done prior, but, you know, like Dave said, just having a cost and being ready to go, like, first of the year.
So I agree, I think that we have to get the cost, however, I wanna say we've already had fifty thousand dollars in there. So that is already allocated to this. So, um, I mean, I guess James can kind of keep that in mind, um, because I think our goal would be, do what we need to with Oak Hill and then see what dollars might be left over from there to be able to utilize, um, in Franchot, but just as a reminder, we do have fifty thousand.
Which, you know, which can get some things started, so.
Jen?
Yeah.
With that, you took one of the parks, I know I mentioned it before, and I probably worked with Joe, but, uh, Forest Park is in bad need of updated playground equipment, it's probably one of the most utilized parks and the equipment's probably from the fifties.
Yeah. No, I agree, one hundred percent. I think we have that on the lot, and even those little, the little parks, they're like from the nineteen fifties.
So have we looked at any external funding, like the Ralph Wilson Foundation does provide grants to cities and organizations for park equipment specifically? And they just opened a grant.
Yeah, I know they got one, well, I know that fucking street was done, right? Um, so, yeah, I mean, that's something we can, I can connect with, um, Kerry on to see.
They did, they did one on Zellmeyer.
In Zellmeyer, yeah, they did that one. Yeah, that's definitely something I can connect with Kerry on to see what our options are on that. I know there is a, um, like, you have to put in so much, is there a match?
Oh, a match.
Yeah.
A matching match?
Yeah, so, um, but yeah, that's something, thanks. Alright, yeah, Fred?
Um, I, I think going to the Ralph Wilson would be great, uh, I know they've done quite a few in the area. Some of this in here, uh, to be, seems to be simple fixes. Uh, some of it could be done via, like, a community, uh, event similar to the one that was held last year. When it comes to the, the basketball court resurfacing, uh, the blacktop, uh, the lighting, uh, if, if the posts are good, uh, then, you know, just painting them will be suffice, getting new heads will be simple. How many lights you got, is it just two or four?
I feel like they're in pairs, like, there might be four?
Up to four? And then, so, maybe some type of timeline should be, uh, presented from the council to break this up into the achievable's, what we can achieve rather quickly, uh, versus those things that we know we're gonna have to do an RFP, like the, the blacktop. I used to ride my scooter down there and literally when you get to the roots, I just jumped it, 'cause it was fun. Yeah, my fifty old body struggled with that one, but.
Can you, and I don't know, is there, is there a way to use, um, like, leftover, like, stuff?
I was gonna ask James, can you, I, 'cause I don't know if you're, like, in your due diligence, you'll figure it out. But if you're swapping the heads on these lights, could those heights be, those heads be repurposed?
Excuse me, potentially, yes, um, if, if they will match up to the requirements.
Okay, yeah, I was just asking if you're gonna change that, could that be?
Yeah.
So we don't need, like, stadium lights down there.
Right.
So, um, but yeah, so can the mill, millings or blacktop, can that be reused from?
Well, the roots.
I don't even know.
The roots of the trees that are down there, they're in the way, so you would have to go
You would have to.
Over that, but then you run the risk of that becoming bad over time. So then you'd have to cut the roots there, you don't know if you're gonna damage the tree itself. So that's why I say if we can look at the achievable's and maybe do something, do an RFP for the basketball resurfacing and for the path to see what those costs would come to. And then my other question was, uh, with the dog park, I'm, I'm not familiar where the pit is, but where is the disc golf playing? 'Cause you don't wanna interfere with what they're doing.
The disc golf is like.
It's on the opposite side, is that the one by the pavilion?
Yes.
The bog, the dog park is like, do you know where you come, where the basketball court is? The murrell, it's right on, behind the murrell.
The muddy section, which, and then you have that situation because when you're on the path, there's a section down there where the water will get deep and you have a choice to either go swimming or go into the dirt, but if you go into the dirt, it turns into quicksand and, 'cause I've done that before and, and sunk in there with my bike, so, um, there's some, uh, issues down there with the water.
Yeah, the horseshoe pit's not near the path.
Okay.
The horseshoe pit is between the pavilion office, that Fourth Street entrance?
Okay.
It's on that end, between that and the basketball court and the disc golf is directly behind A1.
Gotcha.
So you're.
Yep, yep. Alright, so yeah, tho, those are my only two things, uh, besides this tinnitus, having struggled with this humming sound, so I think it's really getting me, but. But yeah, I think if we just set a timeline, break it down into.
Do you want me to, like, put a PL together for, like, a timeline for the achievable's and then, like?
I think we would have to.
I don't know what's the best.
To, are we, you're talking about in-house?
Yeah, like.
Those things?
Yeah, like doing the, like a PL for a timeline for the, like, kind of like a phase one, phase two type of thing.
I mean, I, I think that would work.
Um.
And then that way, a lot of it could be, like, as Anna Stady said, could be put into the budget for next year. Uh, if we get the planning phase done now in early winter, and that way by late winter, some of those things could get started or, uh, or started in the middle of the spring at least to move forward.
So would you prefer a PL, just to have it in the books or just communication on the committee meetings?
I think, in all honesty, I think communication has been had numerous times. So I think if you wanna get it to move forward, you're gonna have to do something to practically get that going, so.
So I'll work on that and then.
Yeah, I think that if you just, I think that if you just, James has been clearly very responsive
Yes.
to everything that we've asked him, I don't think he's gonna, in the past, yes, I would agree with you, that had been resurrected and beaten to death again, but he's clearly been very responsive to every request we've made. And he's asked for very reasonable timelines and I feel comfortable just letting him come up with that.
Well, I'm fine with that, and what I can mark on this, James, is like, what, I mean, obviously, you're the expert, but, um, what I think would be, like, achievable's and then you can let me know, like, okay, wait, we, we don't, we can't do that, and how's that all go back to, like, phase two, which would be, one thing in, like, phase two would be the things for RFPs and bigger things that we need to go out, out of house for.
Yeah, those higher costs, you know, you know, you're not gonna be able to in-house.
Yeah.
Just gonna create more work for those guys than they can do.
Okay.
Um, and then the other, as JR mentioned, uh, the other part, Forest, maybe put that back on to revisit that on two nights left there that needs to be done, and that way, we can do the same approach with that one and try to get those achievable things done so we can show some progress, but then work on, uh, maybe down the road, if not next budget, then maybe the year after, attack another part, and that way, we're essentially creating our plan
Yeah.
to move forward with the parks to, to keep.
Yeah, and that's how I kind of had, like, a five-year, the five-year plan was like, you had to bigger parks and then like.
And then the signs, I know the city has been using, 'cause we wanna stay uniform with our signs, and I know, I can't recall, but I think we were trying to find another company to match what we were using for the signs. Uh, but, you know, I think keeping the signs uniform at all the parks, I think that'd be great. And just one sign, you know, strategically placed to identify the park, I think would be beneficial. Just to identify the park, I don't think we need one on each corner or each angle of the park itself, especially when the one is in a residential neighborhood, I mean, if you have. I mean, if you had one of an actual opening where you drive in, I think that's perfect uh for for that park, but that's just my opinion.
Okay, good, thank you for the feedback.
I think that was it.
So we're going to, you'll get with James, but then we'll put this back on for January?
Yeah.
That was what I heard.
Yeah, I, I think it'd be a great conversation for.
As part of, excuse me, as part of the development for the twenty twenty six.
Alright, you have that Tiffany?
Um one more thing though, with um when we talk about Forest, I think we still have some lighting things to finish up there too, so we wanna add that on there too.
You know, we can add, we can talk about Forest if we put um our next committee meetings, just to bring up a list of unfinished things.
Yeah, you have to feel it's one, two.
One, two, stop.
So in two weeks, Forest?
Sure.
Okay.
Yeah, if I may, we had a, we had a comprehensive plan, not comprehensive, we had a plan done for Forest. And we were going to submit grant for that, and the council at the time uh said, no, we'll we'll put that off until later, so that was about, I don't know, eight years ago, so.
Well, I guess that's way different, so, and a different council, so, yeah, I think it's good to to bring it forward, and I think that's one of the things we've talked about, is there need to be like a a comprehensive plan for a number of things, so.
My point being is that uh Carrie, we should probably still have that information, so we'll put her on, so.
Perfect, thank you, James.
Since we're talking about parks, um I had a constituent found me out that's a new park that they put down in Homer Street, on Buffalo Street, on the corner there. Uh it's all fenced in and everything, and the request was they wanted enough that could get a gate to put across towards that one small section that's not. Uh fenced up, and I guess the reason was is because some people bring their dogs to the park and they let them run loose. If they're walking their dog down sidewalk, the dog runs out, so I guess it would be more or less a feat.
Well, you know, if if, if I may, they asked, uh when we were looking at locations for a dog park, it was talked about that the front of that park.
It would be.
That is uh towards Buffalo, that's all fenced in.
Right.
And it wouldn't take too much to repair the fence in there, and also uh have that as a a uh a dog park there. And one of the thoughts was that, you know, we have the hotel right there, that would give the people to come to the hotel, a place to go with their animals, so that might be something I wanna I wanna consider too.
Okay, but the reality is that they shouldn't be letting the dogs run in the in the park.
Right.
I mean, so that's that's the issue, is people not following the city ordinance.
And the other concern was is, well, again, they should watch their kids, the other concern was is I'm afraid that because Homer Street's a little bit busier with the industrial area down there. That their kids might run out into the road, and I think to myself, well, you, you should be watching your kids, you know, thinking, but that was another reason why they left the gate down there, so.
So just the gate on the one walk-through opening?
Just one gate on the one walk-through opening is all they would have to ask for. So I don't think that would be very expensive to install.
But you can't, but, sorry Jen, you can't just gate that and then let the dogs run loose inside of the park where the children are playing. The dogs and the children can't be in the same enclosed.
No, so then we'd have to probably go out for an RFP, and if if this is something Mary wants to do.
I think that what Bill was telling too before was to take like a third of that end of it, where there's a kind of a grassy end of it, and just put in one more section of fence across that.
Right.
To keep them separate.
Right.
Which doesn't solve the, I guess, me as a parent, I stand in the gate opening, then my kid can't get out, but probably sort it out with Jen's park stuff.
Yeah, simple fix for now, I think just one gate. What they were concerned about is like if their kids play ball, and ball gets kicked out, and runs runs into the road, the kids are running into the road there, because it's an industrial zone down there. And it's, the cell is going back and forth all the time, there's a lot of truck traffic down that area.
Yeah, well, I think we'll have to put that on another thing, so um but we can put that on. We, if we wanna put it on our committee meeting the next time we have a committee, I don't even know what the date is.
So if you wanna put that in your commission, you need an idea of what your college gates are cost, November eighteen, and if we can get a cost of how much the fence is cost at all.
I don't know if we can get cost by then, but we can discuss it more then.
Then we'll have to gate in King Street Park, so.
Just put it back on here. Alright, we got more to do, so any other mayor?
Yeah, I would suggest that y'all go down and take a look at that part. Look at it, because you go in, it goes down a little bit, so I, you know, and it's not a very big park, so I, there's not a, I don't know, there's not a ball field there. But it has a, I'd take a look at it and see what I mean on the front end of it, I call it the front end, but it's towards Buffalo Street. Uh and look at all that area that we could, we could probably like JR says, we could probably put a gate across that, or a fence across there. And establish another dog park right there.
So there's your homework, everybody, go look at it before next meeting and bring your comments and feedback to that. Um what's that, classroom, okay, um okay, so uh thank you, everybody, um no committee reports, motion adjourned?
Second.
Thank you, Sonia, all in favor?
Aye.
Alright.
Alright, I'll call a order committee to hold for Tuesday, November fourth, uh let the record show, all present with the president with the exception of Crawford who's excused. Uh first PL, uh one twenty-six dash twenty-five, uh to support OWH Properties Inc., Operation Warm Hearts, application for exemption. From real property taxes pursuant to section four twenty dash A for real property tax law for the twenty twenty-six general tax year. And the twenty twenty-five twenty-six school tax year assessment roles, uh mayor?
Yeah, what happened was, those of you who were here back uh a few years ago, when the uh the theater group had bought the Seneca over there. They failed to file their tax exemption notice, and uh so we researched the law and said it has to go to the state for what's called a one-house bill. So we did a a letter back then, a resolution, supporting that they go to a one-house bill, so we would be doing the same thing here, that they failed to file their their exemption. So it would be, uh we'd be supporting them to go to the state legislature and and uh file a one-house bill, which would refund the taxes they pay.
Yes. This is, this is not the same, is this a different property, you were just using that as an example?
Yes, I was just using that, this is a different property, this is down on Forest Street. I call it the old Elco, it's been it's been a few different things, it was the uh uh medical loan closet, and then now uh Operation Warm Heart is in there, so. Uh they did not file their exemption in time, and uh so they'll have to pay the taxes, and then uh when they get this bill through the state legislature. Then the taxes, we'll have to refund the taxes to them.
So when Anne Marie Sitter Thompson reached out to me, I had called the assessor's office, and they were absolutely so helpful, and then they reached out to me and everything. So it really was a matter of when, when things close and them not being aware to to file this, and I I forgot, it was like April something. And so when the owners, the Lonsberrys, and as things turned over, it was just kind of timing this and um not being aware, and so things probably went to the Lonsberrys instead of to Operation Warm Heart, so. And as I think everybody here can attest to, that they are an incredible asset to our community, our children, anyone who doesn't know, they give out clothing. And have so many, um I mean, literally hundreds and hundreds of our children's benefit from that, so I would wholeheartedly support this. And thank you, mayor, for working with them, and and the assessor's office was great to give me the information I needed to to give to Anne Marie, so it was very helpful.
I know, I personally have have worked with them over the years, uh volunteering, and I've also helped to be a conduit, I'd say, between National Grid and Operation Warm Hearts. To give them donations and to get uh things uh worked on for their building and stuff like that. Uh they are a great organization in this community, I know I've been on the record saying numerous times that I'm not a fan of not-for-profits. Uh but this particular one does a lot for our community, and I would definitely support anything that they're doing, uh especially this here, so.
I hear Vernon just kind of beefy to it, well, not-for-profits do wonderful things, I think that the number of taxable properties on our rolls that are owned and then exempted. Are, you know, it's a very large number, so I mean, that's the only downside, acknowledging that, to say like, giving these out, I don't say all the time. But when you do, there's there's a large number of them out there, and I think Lance at one time had given that number, it's just, that's the that's the downside to that.
I believe this location has been off the off the tax rolls with the other organizations that were in there, so we're not taking another one off, it's just, you know, it's correct or wrong.
Well, it's not correcting anything.
No, I think this opportunity to do it.
Alright, any other questions on this? Alright, uh I would sponsor this second by my call, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, close. Alright, that will move on to tonight's meeting. Uh PL one twenty-seven dash twenty-five authorized mayor to execute a change order with the layover construction for the Walkable Holy and Phase Three. East State Street project in amount of fifty-eight thousand three hundred ninety-four dollars for quantity overruns, as well as work on decorative lighting and lighting circuit wiring. For ornamental Christmas lighting in the vicinity of the Berry Street Roundabout, mayor?
Yeah, are you direct to talk about this? Yeah, so this uh this change order is essentially the final cleanup of the accounting for the project. Um quantity overruns, there is nothing in there that was out of the ordinary, um it's, you know, very typical when laying that much asphalt numbers. Uh perfect design numbers versus real world, put it down in the field, varies some. Athletic lighting, uh my understanding on that is it's from the big roundabout down uh East State Street over to the North Berry. Or the Berry Street Roundabout, um some additional work we did in there to facilitate decorative lighting for the holidays. So there's nothing on this that um we have any um conflict with or any concern.
You said that this was the the final part of this, uh I wanted to bring up it, cause I wrote a note, uh we were told that they weren't going to dig that deep when they did the East State project. Can't recall the exact words of how far down they were gonna be, but I do recall that a pipe was broken, and I wanted to make sure, so they paid for that aspect of that?
Uh honestly, I have not heard about any of that, um.
That was out here early on.
It was, JR probably remembers.
Oh, is, is that the electric system or something?
No, it was when I had asked why we were not replacing the water lines during the East State Street project, and Bill had said that they weren't digging deep enough. Or they, you know, we were doing sidewalks or something, they weren't digging deep enough to get to the water lines, and that was struck, I believe, in the vicinity of Century, Banner, right, Bill? BFW right there, it was that one.
So I just wanted to make sure that if we're having overruns, that they also make sure that they take care of their aspect of the hit pipe. That's not something that's kicked over to the city, cause we tend to let things go.
Not, not that I know of, but that's nothing I heard of until this conversation.
Okay.
So you're gonna wonder, is that cost of repairs that was mixed in our?
Yes, that's that's what I'm wondering, is that cost of repairs mixed in our invoices?
I can certainly check that out.
That is something I would definitely, I would like checked, because you know, I I definitely believe it holds some accountability, we're gonna get there, because I have an issue with the circle as well, but that is, that's a whole other conversation, so. Mayor, or I'm sorry, future mayor, Benin, James, can you?
So this work was already done, was this work part of the original scope?
The, well, certainly the, in general, the quantity overrun was part of the, yes, now the um work for the decorative lighting and the lighting circuits, that I off the top of my head, I don't know.
So my question, I guess what I'm asking is, cause I'm confused, so please explain it to me. If it was part of the scope, how is there a change order for a cost overrun if it was originally bid, and if it was an addition? How does an addition get approved to that amount without being approved with a PL prior to?
Good fair question that I I can't answer this evening.
No, they are allowed limited, they're a limited amount, but I don't know what the specific amount is.
So you're asking, which I think is a valid question, was the decorative, and I had that underlined, was the decorative lighting and light circuit, was that a part of the original scope of work? That that I think is our question.
And that's what I'm asking, is that would have been in the original per price, and then how did it go over, and how was it done without being previously approved, and now just getting done during cleanup work?
So do we need to give um Jay's time to go research?
I would imagine so.
I mean, before we kinda do anything with this?
Uh Tiffany, could you send us the the um procurement stuff on the change order amounts? That's written out, correct? On, like Vernon said, on amounts and the change order?
I I sent the change order out.
No, on the amounts that require pre.
Oh, yeah, I can tell you that right now, please, hold on.
Sorry, I literally.
I think the mayor might have it in his.
This is the the details for phase three, the bid. You should have a tracker keyword.
I should advertise with commercials.
For change orders, a change order in the amount of up to twenty-five or ten thousand dollars, department has, twenty-five thousand dollars. Mayor, anything over twenty-five has to receive mayoral income and council approval, and that's for a single change order or a single contract pay, I don't care.
And I do see LED foundation, pole box, ground wire, the whole nine yards, I do see that type of work in here, where along the area, I don't know.
So Vernon, is there, I mean, is that actually done, or is there a problem with waiting, I mean, you've got fifty-eight thousand dollar?
I mean, I don't think it's pressing to to wait, uh I mean, if this is just to pay them to close that project out, and uh I mean, but. I guess we can look at it from the opposite aspect, uh regardless, it would have to be paid, because we owe them.
Unless, as you suggested.
Yes.
Right, so I think that there's a couple cleanup details.
Yeah.
I mean, that fifty-eight may balance to your question, and that was mixed in, and that still leaves the overall question of fifty-eight thousand dollar change order amount.
So I'm perfectly fine with waiting on that until we get those questions answered, and uh like I said, I did see LED underground type of stuff in here for for work. What it's for, where, I do not know, surprised I haven't been in there still.
I think this was for, was there a tree planted in that roundabout?
The whole first page was all trees and stuff like that.
I believe it's, I believe that that was for addition of Christmas trees, like the two have.
Okay.
It's specifically to Christmas lighting and decorative lighting, so I think you're gonna find that it's mainly for a Christmas tree in that roundabout.
Okay, so yeah, so if uh you can answer those questions, that would be great, and then we are going to postpone this until the next uh committee to hold meet. Uh so I'll make a motion to postpone, you get a second, second by Benin, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, close, alright, and if there is nothing else for this meeting, I'll make a motion to adjourn, take a second, second by my call, all in favor?
Aye.
Close, we are adjourned from committee. Opposed. We are adjourned from committee to hold.
I apologize all, but, uh, I, I'm going back and attend the regular council meeting. Thank you.
He's got a party book.
All right, uh, I'll make a call to order a regular meeting at the common council for Tuesday, November fourth. Uh, will the clerk please call a roll?
Aldwin Benyon, here. Aldwin Garrett, here. Alderwoman Forney?
Here.
Alderwoman McCall?
Here.
Aldwin Crawford, is absent. Aldwin Anastasia?
Here.
And Aldwin Robinson?
Here.
Sixth president.
Thank you. Uh, please rise for the invitations, the ladies.
Lord, we are meeting today to conduct banners of business, guide our hearts, our minds in the spirit of fairness, right thought, and speech. impart your supreme wisdom upon our activities so that our affairs may reach a successful conclusion. Thank you for being our source of guidance today.
Let's lead this, this is the United States of America, and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Reading correct approval of the minutes of previous, uh, regular meeting?
Regular meeting of the Olean Common Council was held on Tuesday, October twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-five, at seven forty P M. Present were Aldwin Robinson, Benyon, Keery, McCall, Crawford, and Anastasia. Alderwoman Forney was absent.
All right, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes, uh, from the previous meeting. Can I get a second?
Second.
Second by Anastasia, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Uh, committee reports and unfinished business?
None.
Uh, communications from the mayor? Still ladies communication?
None.
City official reports?
None.
Proposed legislation reforms?
P L number one twenty-six dash twenty-five by Mary Alio, referred to committee of the whole Tuesday, November fourth, two thousand twenty-five by council president. P L number one twenty-five dash twenty-five by Mary Alio, referred to committee of the whole Tuesday, November fourth, two thousand twenty-five by council president.
Uh, financing goes?
None.
Uh, resolutions?
Resolution number one twenty-two dash twenty-five, P L number one twenty-six dash twenty-five by the committee, by Aldwin Robinson, seconded by Alderwoman McCall, to support O W H Properties Incorporated, Operation Warm Hearts, application for exemption from real property taxes pursuant to section four twenty dash A of the real property tax law for the two thousand twenty-six general tax year and the two thousand twenty-five dash twenty-six school tax year assessment rolls.
All right, this was discussed in committee of the whole. Any questions, comments? Uh, will the clerk please call a roll?
Aldwin Benyon?
Yes.
Aldwin Garrett?
Yes.
Alderwoman Forney?
Yes.
Alderwoman, Alderwoman McCall?
Yes.
Uh, and Aldwin Anastasia?
Yes.
And Aldwin Robinson?
Yes.
Resolution passed in, and... Resolution number one twenty-three, one twenty-three dash twenty-five, P L number one twenty-seven dash twenty-five, out of committee by Aldwin Robinson and, uh, seconded by Aldwin Benyon, to authorize the mayor to execute a change order with millennium construction for the workable hole in phase three, East State Street project in an amount of fifty-eight thousand, three hundred ninety-four dollars for quantity overruns, as well as work on decorative lighting and lighting circuit wiring for ornamental Christmas lighting in the vicinity of Berry Street Roundabout. This resolution was postponed.
All right, uh, public comment, uh, before we do that, I'll open it up for any of the hall persons, if they have anything they'd like to discuss. You don't want to say nothing tonight? Look, the camera's going right away.
You know, I'm sorry to disappoint.
All right. Well, I, I did want to bring up someone real quick, uh, just real quick. Um, and I thought the, uh, Halloween, uh, festivities in the city, despite the weather, I, I thought it was a great turnout, uh, down in my area of Washington Street. Uh, we usually don't receive a lot of people, surprisingly, and we're right down off of the trail. But we did receive quite a few people this year, and, uh, we gave out candy. Uh, I thought it was a cute moment. I posted on Facebook. Uh, a kid came up with his dad dressed as Safari Ranger. Kid was dressed as a, a little lion cub, and the dad told him, uh, to say trick or treat, and he gave me a little "rawr", and I thought it was the cutest thing, so I posted it. Uh, unfortunately, we had, you know, Benyon posted one, and, uh, we had some, uh, people that just took advantage of the situation. So, uh, hopefully, uh, maybe next year, we can get the Halloween event reestablished with the city. Uh, I think that would be great. That would allow people to drive up like we did during COVID, where, uh, the volunteers, council volunteers, city employees could volunteer, police fire, and we set up, uh, the, I can't think of the street.
Lincoln Park.
South Street, South Street over by Lincoln Park with the boat, where, uh, we quarantined that area and had vehicles come down, and everyone just passes out candy. I thought that was a great turnout. I thought that was a great thing. Again, I never dressed up for Halloween with my kids, and I literally did it two years in a row for that, and my kids were straight up upset with me. So, uh, I would love to do that again. And I think things like that is, is what help bring our community together and, and help her on to, uh, feel a little bit better about the city itself. And, uh, it also eliminates things like what happened at, uh, Aldwin Benyon's house, where people just take advantage of, from candy.
I'll look out, I can bring back my bowl.
Yeah, oh, and, and please, whoever took the bowl, please bring the bowl back. He wants the bowl for next year's Halloween candy, please. All right, so, uh, with that, if there is no other comments from us, uh, will the clerk please read the public comment statement?
Public comment portion of the common council, I think it would be, is established to provide members of the community with the opportunity to publicly state their views, voice their concerns, or provide input pertaining to any issue affecting city government. Additionally, the mayor, common council members, and city departments, I'd encourage any person with questions to contact them at their offices.
Thank you very much. So with that, uh, please state your name and address, and you will have three minutes to speak. Uh, anyone? I need to bring anyone for that.
I'm Ellen Gleason. I live at twelve twenty-six Brook Street. I was here a couple months ago in regards to the rental property next door to me at twelve twenty-eight Brook. Um, we have an awful situation there. The landlord, um, lies under the radar, evicted the tenants. One went to Little Valley because she was hiding out over there. Um, she's to get, well, she's to go to court on the tenth of November. So she may come back, but, um, she evicted them, and now she's letting them back in to the house. Um, and we're just going to have the same drug adult, the whole scenario back again. I just don't understand it. Um, and the, the two, the two that are going to be there, um, that doesn't make up the whole sum of what she's going to want for rent. So is she going to have a, a boarding house again? You know, it's zoned residential, so who, you know, I, code? Just, um, she flies under the radar of code. They, they seem to have a special, um, I, I don't know what it is, but, um, they, uh, seem to, seem to have, uh, she seems to get away with a lot of code, um, and I, I don't understand it. Um, everything seems all neat and tidy, and it never gets taken care of with her, um, and I don't understand why. And, and, um, I, I just think it needs to be addressed. So I, I've reported it. I've shown videos to code of people going in and out of there, um, with suitcases and baggage and living there, and they, they don't do anything. So, um, but I, I feel we're gonna have a, a rooming house again up there, and it's zoned residential, and it's wrong. So we're gonna have the same situation all over again, the drugs and the, and the same, the same thing. So, um, God bless our new alderman. He's gotten, he's, he's gotten, he's gotten an earful, so we appreciate you, Joe.
I'm Eileen Van Dixon. I'm twelve twenty-four Brook Street. I live across the street from Ellen, and what do we need to do to get our street back? Tell us what we can do not to have people walking up and down the streets, pulling the wagon, pushing the shopping cart. Tonight, on the way here, somebody backed out of that driveway so fast, they almost hit Ellen. Uh, we don't know what else to do. It's, it's awful, the people that are going up and down that street. There are kids on the street, lots of kids on our street, and it's a good street. I mean, we have a block party every year. When I was my husband, there wasn't a person on that street that I couldn't ask for help if I needed it. People I didn't even know would say, if you, if ever need anything, knock on my door. I live at whatever. That's the kind of street it is, or was, and now people are, are ruining it. I, and I know it's not just Olean. Last week, I was in New Hampshire on a ski lift, and I heard three different couples on that ski lift who had left New York State and were much happier in other states because of taxes and because of crime. So help us. Help us to make the state better. It's a beautiful state, and we love it. But we don't know what's happening, and we need help. Thank you.
Glenn Wall, Little Belly, not speaking about sewage tonight. I'm expressing my disappointment that a few meetings ago, this council voted to support Nick Langworthy's anti-gas ban federal legislation. This bill would make void New York's and any other state's legislation that seeks to ban natural gas and oil in new construction. I oppose Nick's bill first for the same reason that John Crawford voted no, which is the G O P is always touting states' rights, but when a state does something they don't like, they have no problem trying to get the feds to supersede it. Second, Nick received more than sixty-six thousand dollars from the oil and gas corporations in the last election. Nick has supported Trump's lie that climate change is a hoax, and Nick's dismissal of reality like that is going to hurt our children and our grandchildren's future, as well as our national security and economy if we buy into those lies. New York's ban on gas in new construction is a small step towards transitioning off fossil fuels, which should be everyone's objective, not only because of climate change, but also because of the health and environmental damage fossil fuels cause, including killing three hundred and fifty thousand Americans yearly just from the air pollution and eight million worldwide. The other less well-known fact is that oil and natural gas are finite sources and are closer to their end than the fossil fuel industry lets on. Just like we hit peak oil and gas in the nineteen seventies for conventional extraction, we're close to hitting it with fracking. And once we do, prices will increase and availability, availability will decrease. Most analysts predict that peak will be hit sometime between twenty thirty and twenty fifty. It's not very many years from now, and we need to get moving on the transition. There's a lot of misinformation out there about Nick's bill, such as how natural gas is needed to keep people warm during power outages. But the ban is just on new construction, and almost all new gas stoves and other gas appliances have safety interlocks, so they can't just be lit manually with a match. So with new construction being on natural gases of no advantage during power outages, unfortunately, Nick's party is also obstructing the projects that would make our nat, uh, electrical grid much more robust and reduce those outages. So, yes, I can see how Nick's bill is appealing, give people the energy choice. How can we keep, keep people from doing something they want? Well, we do it often. We don't give people the choice whether to wear a seatbelt or whether to stop at a red light or not. We don't give people the choice whether to pour their used motor oil down the drain or whether to burn their old tires in their backyards. We don't give the people the choice to do things that harm the general welfare. And this would be just one more thing that as a society we see is needed for a livable future. It should be easy to get people to see that, but Nick and his crew have used misinformation to confuse the public. And I'm sure the oil and gas industry will reward Nick again in the next election cycle with a hefty donation. However, village, town, city, and county councils and legislatures should see through Nick's deceit and say no to federal laws like this that diminishes state's ability to make progress to help its citizens. Thanks.
Anyone else? Anyone else? Anyone else? All right, I'll call the public comment section closed. Any questions, comments? Uh, no. Uh, with that, I'll make a motion to adjourn. Can I get a second? Second by Ben, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. We are adjourned.